Are we all good to go? I'd like to call to order the meeting of November 3rd, 2020. I'd first like to start the meeting with an invocation led by Deanne Davis and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Lord, we ask for your presence and your blessing tonight on our community and on our nation. Be with our leaders and our volunteers as they serve our community. Give them wisdom as they make decisions to keep our citizens safe and bring peace and unity to our nation. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBeng?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
DiTilio?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Blakeman?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received the meeting minutes from October 20th. Any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, they'll stand as submitted. I have one item to read this evening. It's a letter addressed to City Manager Lance Willard and Council from Chief Gladys. Says, "November 3rd is Election Day, which is quite momentous, but the day is important to me for a different reason. It is also my 66th birthday. Over 40 years ago, I was first sworn in as a police officer and I've served in a number of public safety capacities since then. I am blessed to have spent the last 11-plus years in service to the citizens of Columbia. A very heartfelt thank you to everyone who has helped me, befriended me, and supported me as I did my level best to make my small contribution to the safety and quality of life in our community. I'm very proud of all of the experiences and accomplishments that I have enjoyed throughout my career. My tenure in Columbia has been enhanced by the public servant style of leadership embraced by the city manager, mayor, and city council members, both past and present. My support, guidance, and friendship is something I will always treasure and appreciate. There are many exciting times ahead for the nicest city in America, and I know each of our public officials will do whatever it takes to make Columbia even better. The federal government tells me that 66 years old is what they define as full retirement age for me, based on the year I was born. After 40 years of law enforcement and public safety service, it has become increasingly clear to me that I agree with them. As a person who likes symmetry and order, it doesn't surprise me that it feels natural and right to announce my retirement on my birthday. 20 years of service in the last century and 20 years in the current one, 1980 to 2020. After serving in three states with three stints as chief of police, continuing the symmetry, I'm sure my three children and three grandchildren will be happy to hear that I intend to slow down a little, maybe by as much as a 33%. I'll finish up immediately after the Thanksgiving holiday, which also seems appropriate, as I thank God for all the blessings, guidance, and protection he has given me in my life. It will be my pleasure to assist the city manager and other officials with any transition-related duties they may ask of me going forward from here. Police work is a front row seat to the greatest show on earth. Credit Officer Sullivan from Third Watch, and it's been a hell of a ride. All the best, all the best to each of you, and again, thanks, Chief Gladys. So Chief, first of all, I'd like to say happy birthday. I think, I think we all would. You've done a tremendous job for us and over the, the next couple of weeks, we'll be putting together some proper comments for you to thank you for your service, but we can't not thank you on your birthday for everything that you've done for our, our city. You, you started about six months before I came onboard and I appreciate you taking me under your wing and showing me around as much as you could. And we will miss your leadership in that office, but we're, we're happy for you and to celebrate your coming retirement.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate you and your friendship and all members of the council. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Chief, I'd like to say just a word.
Sure.
Thanks, thanks a ton. God bless you and best of luck in the future and enjoy those grandkids.
Absolutely. We're ecstatic and I appreciate it now.
My dad gave me one good piece of advice, Chief, and he said, "Don't wait too long to retire." I'm really happy for you.
This, this is good advice and I appreciate the, the help and support. Skip you on my back in the council chambers and everywhere else, and I appreciate that more than I can tell you.
I'm gonna miss you, buddy.
Same here.
Thank you. I haven't been working with you that long, but it's definitely been a pleasure and you're leaving some big shoes to fill, so we are gonna miss you.
Thanks, Dan. Welcome aboard. I think you're doing a great job and it's, it's always good to have a fresh voice and I know your passion and then it's a really great thing to have and I think you can do great things on council. I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chief, for everything that you've done for our administration and our team. Your leadership to our, our team has been great. You know, we've, we've been through a lot together and I appreciate that. I really value your friendship and yeah, you, you taught me a lot about leadership and I appreciate that.
Well, right back at you and you know, you and I share something that I haven't shared with anybody else my entire career, that being a pandemic. Who knew how to get through that? We, we figured that out and you know, things are going pretty well and you've really wrestled it down, so I've been pleased to be a small part of that and I thank you for your help and support and you've, you've really made a difference in the city and I think you'll do great things going forward.
Thank you.
Chief, I'd just like, I'd just like to say that what I've enjoyed working with you is how you think out of the box. We're trying to put, to put together a Christmas, Christmas parade and you're the one that's been saying we can do this, we can make it work under these conditions. And that's what you've done all along is to try to work with the community to make good things happen, so I congratulate you for your work and good luck to you.
Thanks. I appreciate it so much and we, we got this one to pull off yet, but I really think we're gonna get it done and I never like to hear about what we can't do. I always like to hear about what can we do and and you're very much that kind of guy and I, I think it's really been great working with you and I'm looking forward to this event and I think it's gonna be different. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun, so we'll see what happens.
There you go. Thank you, Chief.
Chief, I'd just like to thank you too. Besides working with the city, we also work together on various events for the American Legion and I really appreciate all the help that you gave us for that.
Absolutely. And Dick, you're a, a just a, a pleasure to work with and the Legion has been such big supporters of me and this police department and you know, without you guys and folks like you, we don't get anything done, so that's, that's a big part of it. I really appreciate your friendship and your help.
Chief, I'd like to, I'd like to thank you for the help you gave to the Chamber of Commerce, all the events that you helped us out with, helped us out with Safety Council, helped us out at Community Foundation. I've enjoyed working with you.
Thank you, Deanne. I, I appreciate that very much and you guys, man, you really got a heart for the community and and without you guys pushing from all the stuff you do unseen, it's just amazing and I've been able to see that and and you're a, you're a very good, high-quality person. I really just enjoyed working with you and and without you, I just can't imagine a chamber, a, a city clerk or anything else. It just, you're just, you set the standard. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief, it's all been said here. I enjoyed our conversations. I've enjoyed being around you, learned a lot. We got some pretty big shoes to fill.
I appreciate it, Ted. And you're, you're one of those down-to-earth, soul-of-the-earth guys and you say what's on your mind and you're straight up and I always admire those qualities, so working with you has been a true pleasure and I appreciate it.
Chief, I'd just like to say that I've probably worked with you the shortest amount of time, but I've grown to respect everything you've done for the city. I saw it first when I wasn't part of the city government. Now that I am, you've done a tremendous job. I think recently we've worked together quite a bit and I'll certainly miss seeing you on a daily basis.
I appreciate that very much and it's always good to have a go-to guy and when you got a go-to guy like, like you, your knowledge is encyclopedic and there's just no way to replace that and you just, you just have that experience base and it's been a real comfort to me and I appreciate it very much, Mark. And thanks for all your help and your really good advice. Without that, we...
Anyone else wanna say anything? I know we, I don't, I don't wanna cut any of this short. You deserve whatever comments anyone wants to give you. I do intend to do a proclamation at the, the next meeting and allow for, for time then as well. You're, you're kinda in the same boat that I am. I never expected my last meeting to be on a laptop.
That's just not even right somehow, is it?
No, it doesn't feel right at all. I was actually gonna propose we have our last meetings in council chambers, just so I don't have to do this on laptop. All right, um, let's see. We have two people desiring to address council this evening. The first is Attorney Tom Rodfong. He would like to discuss the, the zone change at 625 Springfield Road. So Attorney, if you'd like to unmute and we'll give you the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity. I wasn't able to attend the public hearing that you had, but I, I did get a chance to listen to everybody's concerns. And I felt that it was important that I at least attend the council meeting and explain exactly what I intend to do, what my plans are, and the help that I need to accomplish them. Basically, it started out as an issue that was whether or not I relocate to Columbia to relocate the law firm, which I decided to do. So the plan for me is to buy the building, relocate my staff. There's four of us immediately. But the building itself was too large for my firm, so my plan was to develop the backend and make it for some additional renters that I could get in there, professional in nature. At all times though, I will be present. I'm not gonna be an out-of-the-town owner of that property, so I will be directly involved with any of the development. And after we put the bid in and the bid was approved, we then had to deal with the zoning issue. And I know you're all aware of the zoning problem, but now it's become an issue with my lender. It's become an issue with the appraiser that's involved with the lender and naturally I've got to invest my own money, so I wanna make sure that it's a wise investment. The main problem was prior to my involvement, the, the hospital, Salem Hospital was the one that was in, that occupied that building. They were able to do that in an R1 district because of a conditional permit, zoning permit that was given by council or actually by the zoning commission, the planning commission. And if you look at those permitted uses, they clearly had authority under that to grant that permitted use because it was an institution for human care, specifically listing him as a hospital. There is no other conditional use. If you've had a chance to look at the R1 conditional uses, there's nothing that would even come close to a law firm, let alone any other type of professional business that I might put in there in the back, such as, I mean, I mean, things came to my mind like insurance professionals, accountants, architects, things like in that realm. But nowhere is there authority to grant a, that permitted use in an R1 district for an office-type setting. And that was the main concern that the lender had, what I had. There's a specific reason why that building is sitting vacant. And it's gonna continue to be vacant until this zoning issue gets resolved because nobody wants to invest the money knowing that there's no zoning permit that will authorize the use that they've got unless it's changed to the C2. And if you look at the C2, the first two permitted uses are administrative, business, and finance offices and professional offices. And then finally, number three deals with accounting, architecture, insurance, real estate, all things that are clearly business office-related. But nowhere in the R1 conditional use would have similar uses. So the, the issue that the bank has is how can the planning commission authorize me under that R1 section when there's nothing specifically there to give them that authority? And I know from listening to the, the minute or the, the public hearing, I know Mr. Black's issue was that the planning commission meeting, they've already gave me permission for office use and I don't dispute that. But the question is, where did they get that authority? And there is no authority for that in the current R1 stat or ordinance. So the only way there would be authority would either be to change the conditional uses to allow for that or to change the zoning from an R1 to this C2, which I believe is more appropriate. I clearly have no intentions of putting anything in there that's gonna disrupt that neighborhood. And I don't plan on buying it just to flip it and sell it. I know I, I heard the Dollar General will come around, come about. I mean, that's just so far from what can really happen at that area if you've ever been back there. I mean, that clearly is in a residential area. That building looks residential. Other than the parking lot, you almost wouldn't know that it isn't a residence and I don't have any plans of ever changing that. But you know, I plan on putting a lot of money into that building and, and, and obviously the tax revenue that that's gonna generate, it's gonna come down to a situation where if, if this isn't done, there's nothing that can happen to that building that I can see other than you leave it the way it is vacant or it's demolished by somebody and used for residential purposes. So I'm hoping to convince council that it's in everybody's best interest, not only the, the city residents, but also for, for myself. It's a win-win that we would be able to make an unproductive property productive. And I'm just asking for that opportunity because without that change of zoning, it's not gonna happen. And then we're right back to square one and the property's just gonna continue to sit there. So I, I'm hoping I can answer any questions that you may have. But that's the reason we made the change or requested the change.
The, under Old Business Tonight, there will be a second reading of that and I would just for expediency for times that suggest that any questions or comments from council regarding this to anyone that would take, take it up at the time of that vote rather than it during the comment portion of the, the meeting right now.
Agreed.
Do you have anything else at this point you'd like to add, Mr. Rodfong?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll, you know, don't go anywhere because it'll, we'll be voting on it here shortly. But next up, we have Terra Design here to present Firestone Park Project Phase Two. They'd like to, to give a high-level presentation to council this evening, so anyone from Terra Design that would like to speak, please unmute and you can have the floor.
All right. Am I able to share my screen? Yes. Okay. Thank you, Amber. All right. Thank you, Brian. So we are here to present the Phase Two of the improvements to Firestone Park. Just a brief overview here. We're showing in the light green, the Phase One that's happening currently. And then the dark green here is Phase Two, the Phase Two that we're proposing. So Phase Two covers a green parking lot, which is your main, current main parking lot, planting at the secondary entrance over on Springfield Road here. Hannah Homestead's Spring Garden, which is in, would be in this area. Idabel Firestone's Garden and Gathering Place, which will be in the, the center of the legacy loop that's currently being built. And then a pull-off on East Park Avenue for any events accessible, drop-off for anything that might be happening at the gathering place. I think most of you have probably seen this before. A lot of this was proposed in our master plan presentation, so it's just a little bit more refined. If it, if it looks familiar, it probably is. First, I'm gonna start at the Hannah Homestead's Spring Garden. Oh, I'm sorry. I should introduce our team too. So we actually are moving forward with a lot of our same-team members from Phase One and Phase Two. HRG will remain as our civil engineers. Imes will remain our electric engineers. Keith Kaiser will be our horticulture consultant again. And then the new face that we're bringing on is an architect, Paul Hagman, who will be presenting in a little bit after, after me. So this area, this is the southeastern corner of the existing parking lot. We want to play on the history of the park, play with the thought of having a ruin of the cabin that the Hannahs may have once had in this, in this area. Because we don't have documentation on where the cabin actually was, we took a little bit of artistic license and, and put it down here where there would have had easy access to the spring. We're, we're kind of reinventing the spring. This is the existing wall that's there that was built, I believe, by a neighbor there. And we wanna keep that and then expand upon it. And really just mostly I kind of celebrate the spring and the fact that that's what brought people to this area. So we're proposing a little pond here, pretty shallow, but there would be a pump, so there'd be recirculating water. And then this would be a grass-mowed swale that would drain the actual spring water. This is the existing legacy loop trail that we're building right now. So this would be another offshoot with Perron steps coming, leading you down into the area and then also eventually into the parking lot or away from the parking lot. These are some sections. This top section, the parking lot is on your left and Springfield Road would be on your right. So as you can see, there's a little grass channel that I was explaining to help with the water, with any of the spring water. And then you have a walk that's raised elevation, but really nice strolling walk with, next to the existing multi-stem elm there. Down below here, we are showing the little pool or pond, I'm sorry, not pool. Pond next to what I mentioned, the existing rock wall that's by the spring. And then the little bridge that would be right next to it for people to come and, and contemplate. They can sit and just enjoy the sound of the water, really. This is the green parking lot. And again, this is the kind of a reimagination of the parking lot that you currently have. We're expanding it a little bit more north to provide some more spaces. You'll notice there are, the most obvious thing are these big green islands in the center. These will be bio swales and these will help tremendously with stormwater runoff and will help infiltrate the stormwater before it is then taken down to this storm lines, sorry. So we can, we're putting it, recycling it back into the land before we need to send it down to the stormlines. They'll be planted with trees. It'll be a variety of trees. This is for multiple reasons. You're creating shade over the parking lot. You're also providing a nicer view from up on the legacy trail and where Harvey's lookout is. Instead of looking over asphalt, you're, you're gonna see a nice canopy of trees and you can then beyond that see the baseball field and, and all the other nice areas in that direction of the park. Up north here, these are actually grass par- parking lanes. And those will also help with infiltration. These are pervious, so the driving lane would be paved, but then the grass parking will, will be pervious, so that will also help with storm drainage. And next, we'll move on to, I'll introduce Paul. Paul Hagman, as I mentioned, he is our architect. He's from RBF Collab. And he will be showing you the Idabel Gathering Place.
Thanks, Anna, and good evening, everyone. So very briefly, I'll go over the, the structure that is sort of at the center of the, the legacy trail. So we've worked several times for several months on sort of what this structure should become and what use it should serve. So with the R and B Committee as well as the Park Board a few weeks ago, we really looked at making this new structure reflect the existing park. There, there was some discussion early on about what shape it should take. Ultimately, we landed on the same stone, very bucolic, natural look, reflecting the same materials and the same style of the park, so that this new structure truly fits in the park. It almost looks like it's been there since the park was gifted to the residents. So you see, of course, the structures that you're certainly familiar with, several of the pavilions. There's the little round bubbler at Mirror Lake that we drew some inspiration from. And during some of those early meetings, we put this word cloud sort of on the lower right, you see there together, just to give us some, some words that I could use and take back to the office when we were designing it. And what we really imagined was a multi-use space that could be programmed for different needs throughout the year. The, the site plan that you've probably seen before and that Anna shared some, some refinements for allows kind of an amphitheater in the front of this space where folks can gather and, and bring their chairs or their blankets. So we knew that one use for this new building could be as a backdrop for a band. And so we made sure that the multi-use, the multi-use programming served that need. There was also some discussion about using this as a backdrop for things like weddings, even for sort of sunrise church gatherings and some educational opportunities for teachers to bring classrooms full of students. So the way we accomplished some of these multi-use needs, Anna, if you wanna go to the next page, was by creating this, you know, some, this barrel arch that you see there really gives this sort of formal presence that gives the backdrop to bands, weddings, churches, ceremonies, as I, as I just mentioned. And then we've created an interior space as well that can be programmed in multiple ways. In the front of this, there is some paved area that is handicap accessible so that whether it's a band or a ceremony, everyone is able to gather nearby and, and get a good view. And likewise, we've created an ADA accessible restroom on the opposite side of the structure that is, that's fully accessible because of the grades that we're creating with the pathways. Excuse me. So this sort of concept creates, you know, a lot of flexibility and it still honors the legacy of Idabel Firestone by taking many of the same elements, both within the park and that sort of column theme with their memorial across the street and integrating those themes together into one structure. That's, I mean, that's really, that's it from me. That's it from me. We're happy to answer any questions or. Field any comments?
Any comments from council?
All the structure, is it no maintenance, low maintenance?
Yeah, that's a great question. We're we're certainly approaching this to make sure that it is low maintenance. Like I couldn't promise you that any structure is no maintenance. You know, they do take some care, but this, we're looking at, you know, a stone structure. We've looked at. Partial metal roofs, especially on that barrel arch, so that we don't have to worry about asphalt shingles. We're also looking at. Making sure that the structure is heated, you know, of course, through the winter, because we do have a restroom in there. We wanna make sure that we don't run into any winterization issues. So yeah, we're certainly approaching it with maintenance in mind.
What are you guys hoping to get started on this phase?
Pending the outcome of this council meeting, I think we're we're planning on wrapping up drawings throughout the course of winter. And as soon as the ground thaws, comes spring, we're ready to build. And I'll let Anna comment more. But we're, I think we're positioned pretty well to keep this moving on the heels of phase one.
Yeah, I feel like we're planning on going to bid in February. And wrapping up by the time pool season starts.
How tall is that building?
My my question is, when we're coming over the top of East Park Avenue, it goes from thirty-five mile an hour to twenty-five. And you're gonna construct a pull-off area up there. How or how or what or where can that, is that going to be engineered? In order to make it safe for those cars moving up and down, let alone the pedestrian traffic that's gonna walk from. The park side there over through the gate into the cemetery.
Yeah, so that's, I'm glad you brought that up. Park Board also brought that up as a concern. And we have not done a traffic study. So that is because that's been brought up multiple times, that is something that we'd be interested in doing. I don't know if the city would would wanna be a part of that, I assume so. But we would want to look into if signage is needed, lights are needed for the pedestrian walk specifically. When we we were on site. The the sightline seemed pretty good, but. The fact that multiple people from Columbia are concerned about it means that we should take a look at it. More in depth. So I think we would definitely be interested in getting a traffic study done.
Thank you.
How tall is the building gonna be?
To the eaves there were about fourteen feet and then the barrel reaches up. I don't have an exact figure, but I would say probably six feet more. So we're about twenty, twenty-one feet.
I would, I would say I would definitely support a traffic study through there to consider even. Lowering the the speed limit a little bit earlier. Well, I think that would be a really good idea. Plus. We might wanna consider getting the the pedestrian walkway kind of painted in and even with signage earlier. To get people used to the idea of it being there. I did have one question on the parking lot. I love, I love the idea of making it not a big ugly space. But with all the trees in there, from Harvey's lookout, are you actually gonna be able to see the park anymore?
Yeah, I think the elevation difference, oh, I don't have that off the top of my head. Believe we're down at. I think as long as we keep the, well, also, sorry, I should mention, so the the trees will be planted in the bio soil. So they're not gonna be right at parking grade. They might be a little bit lower. But we will make sure to select trees that will not block the entire view of the park. But there is a significant grade change from the Legacy Trail down to the parking lot, so I don't think that should be an issue.
Okay, that I mean, that's just one one concern, because it is a really nice view from that spot. I'd hate to not be able to see it anymore.
Yeah, no, and that's that's the point. We don't wanna block that view at all. We wanna just enhance it. And so yeah, that'll definitely be on our minds.
Appreciate that.
Now, you mentioned that. There was going to be an ADA equipped restroom in that building. Okay, are you are you going to have heat in there, Paul?
Yes, yeah, we're gonna have a little electric.
Where are those lines going to be tied into the to the present lines that we have to remove the waste products?
Yeah, so we're looking at the exact elevations now, but it looks like our closest shot is the pool house. We're gonna be doing some heavy earthwork between the pool house and this site anyways. So we should be able to trench and tie in there. I am, I am looking at the exact fall there to make sure that we can do it. We have an option of doing lift station if we need to, but I don't have that information just yet. And then, yes, as you mentioned first, it would certainly be heated to ensure that it's it's usable year round.
The present gas lines would come in from what direction?
So we're looking at just doing electric. Right now, the main service for the park is slated to be relocated right to the location of this building. So we're gonna incorporate that new service into the building and then just use electric resistance heat. The interior of the building is quite small, so the electric, I mean, we'd be looking at a relatively low demand for the heat.
You just mentioned the lift station. And you just told me you're talking low maintenance.
Well, you're right, you're right. I I don't believe we're gonna need the lift station, but we need to confirm that with the falls. So and I don't have the engineering invert for the pool house just yet.
And 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 the city has been looking at that, Ted. We we think we know exactly what Manhole. We're we're looking at and and, you know, Jesse and I looked at it and we we think we have the fault to do that. As a matter of fact, I think that maybe able to to put the tie in on phase one. So we're not coming back through and cutting up that pavement. So we're we're really close to the confirming everything. But. You know, looking at the fall, it's it's. You know, it's a it's a no-brainer from from the way I see it.
I I took a walk up through there the other day, Sunday morning or a couple of weeks ago. Noticed the entrance onto your green parking lot. And it seemed to me, looking from your drawing, that the entrance was clear up at the upper edge of the parking lot. And you were dumping traffic coming in right into line of parked cars, unless you're changing the footprint of the parking lot.
We, so this is the entrance, this is the new entrance, and then the parked cars will be. A little bit more south of that.
Okay, okay. Well, well, your entrance now. Dump straight in to those parked cars, the handicap parked cars.
I I believe we are cutting a bit into that hillside, so we are.
You're changing the footprint of the parking lot, okay? And one more item, I sure hope your wooden bridge looks better than the one at the pond.
The what looks better?
Your wooden bridge that you wanna put up across the, looks better than the one at the pond.
We'll take note of that.
Please do.
Any other questions? And if not, can I have a motion to approve the concept as submitted?
Second.
Any discussion? Have roll call?
Becker?
Yes.
Powder?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Filio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Very good. Pat, I would, I see you're on the meeting. I just want to again. Take a minute to say thank you for all of the. Energy and time and resources that that you've put into the park for everyone to enjoy. I I think it's. It's going to be the nicest park anywhere around and. Be at the center of it. And I, on a personal note, would just like to say thank you for the letter you sent the other day. It's very nice.
We're gonna shoot for the nicest park in America next year.
Keeps doing this, I think you might win it.
No doubt in my mind.
All right, I think with that, we will move it into the manager's report.
Thanks, Brian. So we have been working with the R and B on the Legacy Trail Loop. We're attending the weekly meetings to, you know, make sure we're up on it. The pavilions are getting planted, landscaping and sidewalks and. There, we're also working on the outside of the the pool and the roof for the pool house and. I wanna echo what Brian said about, you know, thanking Pat and the R and B. This is amazing project. If if you'd have told me that we would have all this done, you know, four years ago and and have it done by the end of twenty twenty-one, that would be absolutely. Unbelievable. So we're we're really excited about that and it's a huge opportunity. And we're so lucky that the R and B is participating in this. And we continue to, you know, look forward to working with you on on this phase two. We did put a resolution on the agenda in support of the development of Lakefront Golf Course and that's coming up. That we're, let's see here. I have been working on two stormwater grants for last week or so. We did meet a deadline of yesterday on, it's it's basically phases that we're putting in. Putting in the application and we met that. So we're moving on to the next deadline. The progress committee went went to the school to hear three presentations from entrepreneurial class. About the ideas we could adopt for Mulberry Alley. It was a great process. We're hoping to have them come and present their ideas to 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 council and. It was, it was great. I know the mayor was there and, you know. Rick and Skip were there and we're we're just really excited about what 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 they came up with, so. The lights uptown, we've been testing some things, trying some new things out. We're getting ready for the Christmas light up. On November twentieth and we're we're testing the timing and making sure that we can turn off and on. As, you know, on demand, if you will, make sure we've got all that. So you'll notice some. Changes to those lights. Through the twentieth and we'll we'll probably have them off starting tonight. And we'll just be testing them intermittently, but so the lights will be off until the twentieth.
Let's quick question that there's a couple of strands in there that don't look like they're working properly. Have you guys been looking at that?
Yeah, that's that's part of the whole process that we're working on right now. We're tweaking a few things. We are on the front end of that. You know, in in some of them, we're we're testing out different colors, like last night, we had all green on on one section and wanted to see what it looked like. But you're, you know, we we will get it up and running before the Christmas, you know, light up.
I know you will.
Yeah, Doug and I were up there last night, eight o'clock, you know, checking things out and taking notes and you'll see us out there. We've been working on it. We've got a CRA negotiation coming up and as you recall, we had a committee to look at those CR applications. And we do have an application we must review. And and we currently have two council members on there. We had three crystal. C is up, so if if somebody wants to get on that committee, I don't know how you wanna do that tonight. But if you want to, you know, you know, let me know if you're interested, that would be great, so we can get this application processed. And that's all I have, Brian.
You'll receive the bill list for November third. Any comments or questions on it? Hearing one, we will move into. Old and new business, old business first. Due to the length of the ordinances, can I have a motion to read them by title only?
Some move.
Second.
A roll call?
Powder?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Fatiyo?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty dash O dash thirty fifty second reading. An ordinance amending the Columbia City zoning ordinance thereby rezoning track number one containing point zero six eight acres and track number two. Containing point six six acres of land from R one residential low density to C two office and limited business zoning district.
So moved.
I'll second it.
At this point, is there any additional discussion?
Is, yeah, is there, is there any way I I I'm I'm understanding both sides of this. Yeah, I don't wanna see that sit vacant. But I also understand the the problems that are associated with the the neighbors that are there, their concerns. Is there any way that we can modify that? Ordinance. To include businesses rather than doctors' offices, just, you know, limited to that, or can we conditional use it to have? Also have. Attorneys and whatever.
The way we did it through the planning commission, it was basically to just grandfather what was already done. Because it was already business office space and we we gave permission for that to continue. Because the building hasn't changed, it hasn't changed in concept to what's inside of it. And the way we did it with general office space rather than medical was because it already was office space in there. So. Attorney Rod Fong asked how how we came up with that. That's that's how we did. But whenever they came back then after we did so, they requested that we change it to C four to match what's next door with the hospital. That we weren't comfortable with. We were comfortable with C two and that was the recommendation originally. Which was a no vote at the last meeting. So I I don't see any other way to 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 do what's being asked. I really don't. I mean, that's why, I mean, it's, and I asked at the last meeting, you're really, you're choosing either to. Keep the office space as it was. And leave it R R one, knowing that building's gonna sit empty. That's why the neighbors next to it asked if they had to take care of it. Cause I don't, the intent and the way it was left at the last meeting was that they did not care if it sat empty forever. I don't personally feel that way. I I I don't think that having empty buildings. Is ever a good thing and I think it in and of itself detracts from property values. But like I said at the last meeting, I it if the majority of the neighbors would prefer living next to an empty vacant building. On them.
Here's my question. My question is, it sounds like they had the, they had the opportunity. To make the adjustments to the building to be able to do what the attorney just indicated us earlier. That he wanted to be able to use it for other space.
Well, but what he's suggesting is that the 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 banks don't want to loan on that, correct, attorney? You're muted.
Yes, that's correct.
There's another issue too. You've indicated that you're interested in. Using different types of businesses in the in the space. Typically, when there's rental property and new businesses wanna come into an existing like shopping mall or whatever. typically when there's rental property and new businesses want to come into an existing like shopping mall or whatever. Uh, each one of those has to go before planning commission and ask for permission to uh, operate that business in that space. And if you uh, have it as a conditional use under uh, residential zoning, then you wouldn't be able to do that. Uh, as a C2, you would be able to do that. So it, it, hearing what your plans are. It seems like if we want that thing, place to be uh, used and we would like to see some of those new businesses come into town or, or move into that area, that we almost have to change it to a commercial zoning.
I spoke at the last meeting and uh, um, um, went through a lot of things with you and I think you probably most remember, most of you remember those types of things. The biggest problem we have here is that there, once, once you change this to C2, it is C2 forever. Um, as long as he has a conditional use, it is a conditional use for as long as he uses it, as long as he uses it for what you tell him he can use it for.
Unless a bank, if a bank won't loan on something we'll use then.
Folks, let me add.
The problem here is.
Technically, council only has authority to grant a conditional use for what's in the zoning code. If that use is not in the zoning code, I don't care if it's been done since 1980. I don't really think it's grandfathered. You have an issue where it sat vacant, now it's going to be used again. So you do have a problem with a conditional use. Dick is right. With a conditional use, you can do what you give them the conditional use certificate for, but it still has to fit within our code. So just be mindful of that as we're discussing this. There's, you're limited in an R1 with the conditional zoning certificate, what you can actually do.
If I could continue, you cannot uh, you cannot restrict what happens in a C2 to a business, to a uh, the business that you're trying to, to talk about putting into there. You can't limit it to a doctor's office or something like that. What is included in a C2 is dry cleaning and laundry agencies. Do we want a laundromat on Springfield Road just down from that serious uh, dangerous intersection? Uh, barber and beauty shops, those might be all right. Choose repair shops. But retail uses such as apparel, art, photography, stationery, notions, hobbies, toys, books, music, flowers, jewelry, gift sales, drugs, optical goods and groceries. You tell me something that, that doesn't, you tell me how a dollar store doesn't apply in on that. We don't want a dollar store with traffic there. You have 40 parking spaces at that building. When you have a business uh, similar to um, a doctor's office or something like that, the people come in, they're there for an hour or two hours or something like that and they leave. When you have a dollar store that they're for 15 minutes, you have 40 parking spaces and you have 40 cars in and out, in and out. Through that intersection, the intersection, you can't change the intersection.
Yeah, Mr. Black, uh, I, I want to be respectful of your comments and your time, but I, I also want to make sure that we're not um, rehashing the exact same meeting that we already had two weeks ago. Um, and I think we did have that discussion all, already. I think, and I think council's very familiar with it. Um, huh, council members, do you have any, any additional questions before I call for the roll?
Um, I just want to throw it. I actually kind of like Skip's idea. I would rather change the, the conditional zoning permissions to allow for professional office spaces than to change the zoning in this particular spot. I, I don't like it, the, the idea of getting into changing zoning for an, an individual city lot like that. I don't think that's the way we want to go. So I would prefer, I mean, if we're going to have this discussion and talk about making a change to allow for a little bit more use in a conditionally permitted R1 district than to change the zoning. I, I just don't think that's the right way to do it.
I. The only comment, let me make a comment about that. You can certainly do that, but that's not going to be a quick process. And can, will you just open up to make one change or are you going to consider other changes? I mean, it's not as simple as you can vote and voila, it happens. Um, there is a procedure you're going to have to follow and you're going to really have to consider whether you want to increase conditional uses in an R1 district. Just, you know, just food for thought.
What, what are the, what are the, what are the uh, problems with that, Mark?
I don't know if I'd say skip that there are problems, but it's a process that you're going to have to follow to basically change the zoning.
Yeah, the first, the first thing that would have to happen is we'd have to go back to planning commission and they'd have to put together the uh, wording and everything that they wanted to recommend to council for council to approve. So you're.
And council would have to consider it. There would be a public hearing on it. So you're looking at several months, lengthier process.
Okay, but we, if we can go through that process, it sounds to me like we would have a building that's going to be occupied. And it's going to be good for the city and it will match what the people on Springfield Road would like to see. And I, to me, that's a win-win. I, I don't, am I missing something?
I'm not going to say it's not a win-win. I'm just wanting you to understand, you know, like Dick says, you've got a process that you're going to have to follow. You may have other input from other people that aren't even present now as far as whether it's a good idea to add another, because you're adding a use, you're adding another conditional use in an R1 district, any R1 district in the city. So just consider that too. That's something you're going to have to decide. Do you really want to do that?
Okay.
With building, but is that something you want to just add to the code?
If we put, if we've taken someplace and we've done it, an R1 conditional use for it. And they're there and they're, they're using that as it stands right now. If we change the R1 conditional use to expand it to attorneys and, and architects, things like that. I guess what I'm hearing is then anyone that we've given that R1 uh, conditional permit to, they can do that in that area.
No, that's, that's not for, it, it's possible they could, but they'd still have to go to planning commission and ask for the conditional use to.
Anybody would still have.
And they could choose not to do it or do it.
But even so, that's probably not a bad thing because it's still reasonable in that zoning.
If that's what council decides that they want to allow greater than just healthcare related offices in an R1 as a conditional use and you know, Dick is right. Every one of those is going to be an application for a conditional zoning certificate. So council will get to deal with the planning commission will also have a voice in it.
So we can still control it.
You certainly can control it. I just want you to understand that it's going to be a process that takes time too.
It still doesn't sell this piece of property. It doesn't fill this piece of property because the lender, if I'm right, will not loan the money on a conditional use. Is that right?
I thought, I, what, what I understood, at least I thought I understood was they wouldn't, they wouldn't loan the money on the conditional use that we have. If we expand the conditional use. Correct me if I wrong.
That would be, you know, is if Tom's.
Tom's still on.
Yeah, I'm here. I don't know. I, I think you're correct. The problem was the current permitted use. They didn't feel comfortable with that language because the use was different from a medical facility. If that's uh, conditional use is changed and um, increased to additional uses that would include professional offices and such. That certainly seems like something they would be okay with, but I would need to run that by them obviously.
One of the things that I think is significant is I bought my house on Springfield Road a lot of years ago. And when it was zoned the way it was residential, a lot of housing and you know, was built in that neighborhood. Now we're talking about taking one piece of property and spot zoning it uh, for a use that could uh, convert into many other things which are not desirable to the neighborhood. And um, I, I, I agree with, with our council that it would be a process to restructure the conditional use. But um, I still think that's, that's something that could happen.
That conditional use is going to give you exactly what you had before the medical offices moved out. It's going to give you professional offices with limited access in and out. I don't see where that's going to be a problem to Springfield Road.
Correct. Yeah, I think the only real issue is, is how does it limit what goes on in the back? But as long as it would comply with that, I don't know how far you want to expand that. And I guess that's something that the planning commission will have to take up.
Yep, that's right.
Cause it seems like Mr. Black, who I think speaks for the people opposed, his big hang up is number seven with all those various businesses. You know, that really has no play in, in this property. It's really on the first page, under the first three. If they become from, you know, conditional uses, I think it would work.
Sounds, it sounds to me like it would.
Yeah.
It's just, it's going to take time, but I think it's, I, it feels to me like a better solution than spot zoning. And you know, I, I, yes, there's going to be a lot more discussion about this, but I think is, has less potential for harm. I just, I don't like the idea of spot zoning. And especially taking and, and making the zoning fit the building instead of making the building fit the zoning. In this case, we're doing it either way, but I, I feel like it would be a better solution and I don't.
I think as a planning commission, we were, we were, we were trying to uh, make something happen.
Yeah.
And, and I, I agree with council that maybe we should look at changing the conditional uses for the, the, in residential. Uh, we'll have to do now, some soul searching and, and get it right. But I, I, and that may be the best thing to do.
Call for the vote.
Yeah, can I have uh, the vote please?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay, if we're going to, if we're going to go down the road of expanding conditional use. How do we go down this proposal? We still turn it down and then go back?
You wrote this down and then you'd have to send it back to the planning commission to uh, come up with recommended changes and then they would still, you guys would be the ones changing it.
Right. But this one has got to be turned down before we can do anything.
Well, one has nothing to do with the other, but if you don't turn it down, you're uh, you're, and you vote yes, it's, you, it passed what you're saying you don't want to do.
Exactly, okay.
Have a roll please.
McBane?
No.
Liston?
No.
Fattilio?
No.
Noel?
No.
Becker?
No.
Souter?
No.
Fail second reading, it is defeated.
All right, ordinance number 20 dash O dash 3051, second reading. An ordinance vacating a portion of Mary Alley and Long Alley.
Don't move. Don't move.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Yes, I have an item, Brian. Uh, we did not get the uh, description um, for this, you know, for, in the survey for it. So um, I've talked with uh, Mark on this and you know, without that, that's, that's key to the second vote and, and we thought we were going to have it, but uh, we don't. So um, my recommendation or maybe, maybe I should uh, turn it over to Mark, but I'm thinking you uh, should probably table it.
Yeah, I'd like to move, we table it to a future meeting.
I think, you know, the legal description is a very important part of an ordinance that's vacating an alley. You don't really know what you're vacating if you don't have that. It has to be attached when it's recorded. So not having it when you vote on it is a bit of a problem. If it's tabled, if we've run out of time, the process may need to start over. I don't think that that means the process can't start over. It just means it might take a little bit more time.
Well, I think you've already followed all of the uh, proper steps with the, the public hearing and you've had, had a first reading. I think there's, I don't know that there's really a time limit on tabling the, the second, second reading. You can bring it off the table at a later date. And I would think it would still comply.
Will we have a next meeting?
Or arguably it complies. I mean, again, the worst thing that could happen is, so the public hearing process starts over again. Um, if not, you're able to bring it back off the table once there is a legal description.
Can we just vacate the alley with the, with the provision that when the legal description comes up, that it gets added?
I think we need to table it. You know, we, we're doing our part. We've done everything. Uh, the ball is in their court and it's rolled under the table or something.
Yeah, I made the most of the table, so I'd like a second.
I'm dealing with the situation right now. Okay, uh, there was a vacated alley and it, it, it didn't get recorded uh, on the deed. And so therefore it's got to go all the way back to the very beginning and run its whole entire course. So whoever's going to have part of that alley, okay, to pay taxes on, okay, needs to have that on that deed when that's vacated.
That's, that's a city alley.
Who's going to get part of it?
What?
Or is it all, it just vacated period?
Okay, uh, I have a quick question for you, Mr. Becker. We, I could not hear what your question was or how you started out, but um, can you, can you start from the beginning?
Then it's a vacated alley, okay? If we, are we, are we closing it? When you vacate, you close that alley down completely, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then who does that property go to? Does it go partially, is it just all stay in the city or does it part, does it go to the property owner adjacent to it?
No, it goes, it usually it goes to the property owners on.
Each side.
It gets split.
Fifty fifty, correct.
Yeah, there was a, there was an alley that ran between uh, my house and Cusick's house, which the city vacated quite a while ago and um, we each got half of the, half of the alley and then I sold my half to uh, Dave because he wanted to build a garage and it, he needed the extra space. But anyway, it gets split between the adjacent part uh, owners, property owners.
Which is exactly what I'm meaning, Dick. The problem is some of that stuff gets, it gets slid underneath or falls through the cracks. And at some point in time, when that other person would like to sell that along with their house, they get stuck not doing it. That's the, that's my, my understanding of, of vacating an alley is that, will that be recorded before we vote on it this last time?
The reason.
Right?
The ordinance gets recorded and that's what anybody that's searching titles finds. That's why it's important that we have the legal description. That's an accurate legal description attached. As Ted says, you, you guys are doing your job. However, that legal description needs to be attached to the ordinance. Without it, it can't be recorded. So then Dan, to answer your question, the exact problem that you're talking about, that yes, that does occur occasionally, especially with old vacations that nobody recorded. Um, that's exactly what would happen. So it's important that we have the legal description.
All right, as long as we have our ducks in a row on this, on this, because uh, I personally have been affected on this, not just one time, but two times. Oh, yeah. You know, I mean, it's, it, it's quite frustrating, but I'll back off of it. I now know what we're going to do and you're saying it's going to be recorded, then it'll be recorded.
It'll be recorded, but it won't be until we have a legal description and that's the reason that it probably should be tabled right now.
Assume when we have the legal. How soon will we have the legal description?
Pardon?
How soon will we have the legal description?
Not in our control.
Well, it needs to be, I mean.
Wow, yeah.
If we just table it, none of this matters.
I agree, I second the motion.
Yeah, I call for the vote on the motions table.
Give a second to that, Dick.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Have a roll call, please.
Liston?
Yes.
Filio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
All right, next up, uh Lance, do I still need to read this as the emergency or just a first reading?
Uh, just uh first reading, what, yeah, first reading.
All right, ordinance number twenty dash O dash three zero five two, first reading. An ordinance amending appropriation ordinance twenty dash O dash thirty thirty by adding three hundred thirty eight thousand, seven hundred thirty nine dollars and sixty three cents in the CARES Act fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
Excuse me, Brian, I, I thought you were at the APL. Yeah, we need to read this as emergency.
All right, so I need to first have a motion to read this uh ordinance as an emergency.
So move.
So move.
Second.
A roll call.
Filio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Well, whenever it's worth, um, Trump just went up in Florida, one point one percent with eighty seven percent of the vote in. Some interesting news. Anyway, ordinance number twenty dash O dash three five two, emergency, an emergency ordinance amending appropriation ordinance twenty dash O dash thirty thirty by adding three hundred thirty eight thousand, seven hundred thirty nine dollars and sixty three cents into the CARES Act fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
Don't move.
Second.
Any comments?
Um, Lance, why don't you give, I know some of us have heard it, why don't you listen, run down what, what we're talking about.
So, uh, what we're doing tonight is just appropriating the funds of the three hundred thirty eight thousand dollars. Uh, we set up a committee, uh, ad hoc committee last, uh, last meeting, talking about how, you know, how we're going to meet these deadlines. I've been working with uh Dan, uh, Dick and, and Skip on this. And I think moving forward, you know, we're working on um, we're working on some equipment, um, you know, safety scans, like you saw at the, if, if you voted at the uh Board of Elections, you know, things like that. Uh, we're also looking at uh digitalization of things. And, and we're looking at sanitation uh also. But we're not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what that's going to look like, but the key is we have to make sure that, you know, any, anything that we do um spend, you know, meets their criteria and we also have to do it by December thirty first. So what you're doing tonight is a little different than what I've been talking about. Um, this is not uh actually spelling out the, the budget of that, but uh, you know, we're, we're working on that. Uh, you, you will notice, um, you know, I did go out to bid for a sanitation device uh slash restroom and uh, you know, that's an option, but we're, we're, we do not know where we're going to end up uh on that, so we're just um, we're trying to work through it.
Any other questions? A roll call.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty dash R dash five six two, first reading, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement with APL Properties LLC for the city of Columbia.
Don't move.
Second.
No, I think this is a great project. Makes a great project to uh expand our infrastructure. As long as we're not high on the hook, I, I think it's, we should go with it.
Well, one of the, one of the things that council's been doing for several years now is at the direction of the entrepreneurs in town is to drive people into the city. This is another place, it's another thing that's going to drive people there to see it. Because I know once it gets finished, it's going to be publicized, the tourism bureau is going to use it. Chamber of Commerce is going to use it and people are going to come in to see it. Right, yeah, that, I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, like Skip said, uh, he and I toured the property last week and I think others have done it too. It is a beautiful, beautiful piece of property that is sitting unused. And um, anything that we can do, you know, obviously without taking a bunch of risk on the city, which I, I love the way that, as I understand it, the TIF is being structured where the city doesn't have that risk. Um, I think anything we can do to support it, we should try to do.
It, it should end up being a real showpiece, it really should.
Any other comments?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Filio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
All right, uh, will there be any action afterwards on this executive session? No?
No.
Okay, well, we'll do council comments now. Actually, is there anyone from the public wanting to address council?
Brian, just one thing, it seems to me like that we ought to, council ought to vote on a request to the planning commission to develop the uh changes to the zoning code we talked about. So I'd like, I'd like to move that we do that.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, a, a motion to add uh additional conditional uses?
Yes. And, and, and those additional uses should be related to office space only.
Professional office space, yes.
Professional office space only.
Can we start working on that in January?
No, you're still on board.
No, no, no.
Split it December, January.
We'll get to the public comment section before January anyway, I don't think, right?
Oh, yeah, we can do that. All right, uh, have a roll call.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Very good. It didn't look like there was anyone from uh the public wanting to address council, so.
I believe, I believe Rob.
Rob, you have to unmute Rob.
Uh, how are you doing, guys?
Good.
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time uh to meet tonight and to uh take the, the, the vote uh regarding uh uh the last uh ordinance and also thank you, uh Chief Gladys, for all your service too. So we've uh, as a resident in town and stuff, I appreciate um everything you've done, so thank you. That's it. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. All right, if nothing else, do you, any council comment? All right, I need a motion to go into executive session regarding the discussion of collective bargaining unit section one twenty one point two two G four.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
To the other, I just looked the same.
Technology is great if you don't get left out in space.
I've been there more than once.
Brian, you're muted. Are you ready for a motion to come out?
I'm sorry, I did. I didn't realize I was muted. Yeah, go ahead. I don't know, I must have put the mute back on when I came out of the, the room.
I was too, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Are you ready for roll call? Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Best part of the day, yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Very good. Uh, anything else for the evening?
I'm just going to throw this out here and we don't have to talk about any more than this. It would be cool if we could be back in council chambers for the last meeting of the year. So, we don't have to talk about any more tonight, but I think it would be kind of a cool target to shoot for.
I would agree.
I agree.
Lance, make it happen. You're muted, Lance.
He wanted to be, because I, I
Spend all of that three hundred thousand on getting us back into the council chambers.
Yeah.
All right, um, if nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn.